Good evening, I'd like to open the March 28th, 2023 Beppo Planning and zoning meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioners, if you would each introduce yourself to the audience, please, starting with Ken.
Henry Dawson.
Linda Curtis.
Penny Kessler.
Ken Stevens.
Kitty Grant.
Rob Wallace.
Don Keeney.
Paul Shemler.
Beth Cogwagner.
Danny Director.
Nancy Lobo recording second.
Mr. Legnard.
I'm Legnard here.
David.
Dave McCollum, Land use coordinator.
I believe we have counsel on as well this evening.
Yes, Chuck Andrews, Attorney for the Commission.
Thank you. I'd like to start the meeting by reading our personal use of electronic device, personal use message. Please note that for the record that any personal electronic devices used by the committee members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. The fact, the first item on our agenda is continuing the public hearing for seventeen Whitney Road. Are we ready?
Yes. Now, just being a counselor for the record, it's in my understanding and speaking to staff that there are still a couple of outstanding issues, one major is the way for Health Department review. And also, we've submitted a traffic study, Mr. Hesketh is online. Pretty relatively straightforward report, but we submitted that, and my understanding is that you're getting that reviewed by by your technical staff. So the expectation is that you'd like an opportunity to be able to receive that while hearings open. And of course, we'd like an opportunity to be able to comment on those things that come in. So I'll put on the record and I will timely respond in writing that we would consent to an extension of time and would be able to have a brief presentation tonight just on the new materials, most of which came out of recommendations that came from the Wetlands Commission, but a couple of other items that I think Mike can go over. But with that, I just wanted to start off by saying that if that is the commission's desire to keep it open, we will grant an extension, allow that to happen for the other items to be received.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Professor engineer, my office is in February, representing the applicant. And David, I don't know, can you put the plans on the screen, David, or?
I am working on that presently.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just go over the few minor changes. We did respond to the comments that were received from the town engineer, the Health Department, and any from planning staff. And so I'll go over the engineering comments. And the first one was the existing conditions map was revised to reflect the change in the grading that had occurred. And I noted that there was approximately 200 cubic yards of material that was just cut and then moved and filled into a, you know, another area on site, also showed the retaining wall that was installed. Okay. There was a comment about whether the gate was going to remain, but the gate that's there now is not going to remain. It'll be free flow traffic through that main entrance. We added a concrete apron to the detail sheet, I don't need to look at that, to drive aisle width, that dimensions on the site plan, David, if you can get on one. So we just added some dimensions to clarify aisle widths. As the town engineer had asked, there was a missing handicap symbol here that we added, I had the arrow to it, but somehow the symbol was missing. We also added, this was one of the Wetlands comments, a baffle to the drainage system. If you want to go to the site utilities, thank you, David. So on the outlet here, we added for just oil-water separation. There's a, on the other pipe, there's going to be a T, it'll be slightly below the invert going out. So if any oils are in that system, the only oil that would be able to get out of it would be the 12-inch diameter where that T is placed. It, the town engineer asked for an additional manhole here, but it was between the hatch for the galleries and the hatch for the gravel pad, you could hardly see the catch basin head. And so that gives access to that end of the system, so it wasn't warranted. And we added some additional detail on the outlet pipe. A note about the retaining wall, smooth wall finish. And just standard notes about installation of the drainage system, inspections by the Public Works Department. And that the locations would be shown on the final ASB plan. And we also added a note that any retaining walls over four feet be designed by a Connecticut licensed professional engineer and reviewed by the Department of Public Works prior to issuing a building permit. This response was from, was in regards to a letter from the Health Department. It was regarding the fugitive dust. Because they operate a masonry supply business, it has been an ongoing problem for many years and has been documented with correspondence between both parties as well as the town. The business was and is obligated by its special permit to control dust and have, most importantly, a watering plan in place for dust control. For many years, this mitigation measure was mostly ignored, and that prompted the Saunders to not only try to have the business address the issue, they also coordinated with the town zoning department to enforce the conditions of the special permit. After much collaboration with all the parties, the business initiated a time sprinkler system that had addressed the dust issue. The applicant has been satisfied with the effectiveness of the dust control measures enacted. In regards to the dumpster pad size, they have reviewed several other similar facilities and have determined that a six-yard dumpster and a two-yard commingled recycling container will fit side by side in the proposed area and also meet the needs of the residents satisfactorily. The previous plan was for 30 units called for 10 foot by 17. The pad is now 10 foot by 22. And the call out was labeled incorrectly, it was labeled under the old 10 by 17, but that has been corrected. Scheduled pickup times can be altered or added as needed to address any future needs of the facility. The occupants will be required to remove garbage and or recycling from their units at least weekly and more if necessary. Refuse pickup from the site will be weekly at a minimum and more frequently if needed. There will be no other formal garbage maintenance agreement provided. The final response was to comments in a memorandum from Beth Cogwagner. And it was with regard to the excavation, the cutting and filling that had taken place. And basically, we didn't we didn't change the grade more than two feet, the poppy line is a two-foot retaining wall there. And as I mentioned, the amount of material was less than 200 cubic yards. With regard to the retaining wall itself, it didn't need a building permit because under section 6.5C, other standards to a retaining wall four feet or higher above the ground level requires the issuance of a building permit, which I think I stated before in response to the engineers' comments. And okay. But based on that and the regulations, the applicant is in compliance as it pertains to excavation, filling, and retaining wall construction, as noted. And the grading improvements fall under several categories, where if the amount of material is less than 500 cubic yards, then no permit is required. And I just submitted the section of the regulation, section 6.4C, activities allowed and a list, basically, a lot of things with, or if it's under 500 cubic yards, then there's no permit required. And again, the last part of that response was with regard to the dust, and I submitted, it's a little hard to read, but it's basically the schedule of the sprinkling, the hourly schedule of sprinkling for the neighboring property that they implemented in last spring. So, and there has been no complaints since they implemented that measure. All right. So that's about it, I mean, I can go through the detail sheet and show you the baffle, but I don't think it's necessary. But if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Afternoon.
And I'm not sure, I know Scott Hesketh, Scott Hesketh is in the room, was available to ask questions. I don't know, Scott, whether or not you planned on giving a summary of your report. You're certainly welcome to as part of our presentation if you plan on it.
So, Ken, since you've asked, good evening, my name is Scott Hesketh, I'm a professional engineer state of Connecticut, the firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates. And at the request of Attorney Slater, we've provided a traffic impact report for this proposed development. In the course of preparing our report, we did a field investigation to review the existing roadway conditions in the field. We reviewed the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation to obtain recent traffic volume counts in the vicinity. We estimated the traffic volumes for the proposed development based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Report. We've conducted capacity analysis calculations at the intersection of the proposed site driveway and the town roadway. And we reviewed the intersection site distances at the proposed driveway location. According to the Department of Transportation Traffic Volume Counts, Elgin Avenue carries an average daily traffic volume of about 450 vehicles with the peak hour volume of less than 50 vehicles per hour. There were no counts available on Whitney Road. But we feel that that roadway probably has similar volumes. Based on the Institute of Transportation Trip Engineers Trip Generation Report, the proposed residential development will have a trip generation potential of about 345 trips on a daily basis and a peak hour volume of 40 trips or less during peak hours. We distributed that traffic to the roadway network based, and based on the DOT background volumes and the site generated traffic volumes, we've calculated that the site driveway location, the intersection, all movements would operate at a level of service A during peak hours. So very efficient levels of service that location. We looked at the institute, we looked at the available intersection site distances of the main site driveway intersection. If you're in the site driveway, looking to come out onto the town roadways, you can see in excess of 300 feet in each direction. So we more than meet the minimum site distance requirement for exiting the facility based on the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour of the local roadway. We also checked the site distance available for someone making a left-hand turn into the site driveway. And the minimum required site distance for that would be 202 feet. There is in excess of 225 feet of site distance for a vehicle sitting in the Whitney Avenue waiting to execute a left-hand turn into the site driveway. They can see in excess of 225 feet to vehicles approaching along Elgin Avenue. Therefore, we meet the site just requirements for that particular movement. So based on the low volume of background traffic, the low volume of site generated traffic based on the fact that the levels of service at the site driveway intersection are level of service A for all movements. And based on the fact that the vehicles both entering and exited in the site have sufficient site distance for the posted speed limits. We believe that the local roadway network and is more than capable of accommodating the traffic volumes from this proposed development. And that the increased traffic from this development will not result in any harm to the traveling public and that the intersection should operate safely and efficiently with this development in place. The commission has any specific questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
My pleasure.
Unless there's other questions, given the fact that, you know, we're expecting, we'll be coming back for a future hearing, we don't have anything else to concede.
Thank you very much.
You want to say?
Yes.
No, I just, Scott.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, there was, Beth, you had asked a question about in looking into the emergency, I call it the emergency investor.
You do, yes.
Yeah. Then you asked about exiting traffic out of that, and it's, it's one, basically, it's a one lane, yeah, one lane, it's not two lanes. And in Scott's reporting, if he wants to talk about it more, but he calls, he doesn't want traffic exiting out of that and calls it out to be gated.
Okay.
For, for that reason, because if you're at that point, you really don't have the proper site distance, making an exit out of that, an exit movement out of that other emergency access.
Okay, Scott, could you, thank you, Mike, could you expand on that a little bit more too, please, as far as a right-hand turn lane onto Whitney is, isn't the best, it isn't the best location for site and its usefulness isn't
Yes, my review of the site plan was there was two site driveways. It was my understanding that one of them was the main site driveway, which is the existing driveway between the existing pillars. And that was to be the main access driveway to the site. It was my understanding that in response to questions, comments, and concerns from the, from the fire marshal, that a second means of egress was provided to the site. And that that second driveway, which does intersect to Whitney, Whitney Road, was for emergency purposes to accommodate the fire apparatus. That second access is not required from a capacity standpoint to accommodate the volume of traffic anticipated from the development. And since it's in place for the purpose of providing access for the fire apparatus, it would be our recommendation to, to chain that driveway so that the only, so it's only accessible by the emergency vehicles. And one of the reasons would be that you have better site distances into and out of the main site driveway than you do at that secondary site driveway because of the 90-degree bend in the roadway. If you're trying to turn left into that driveway, you can see across the neighbor's property. But that may be true today. It may be at some point in the future, they put some shrubberies or a mailbox or, or something, or a fence up which blocks like this from that location. So we can't rely on that for access from a vehicular perspective. Certainly, emergency vehicles, you know, large fire trucks with horns and whistles and sirens can certainly do that, and they do it very frequently. But we wouldn't want that used by the general public. So it would be our recommendation to, to chain that and use it for emergency purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Also, you should be forwarded, or you can find in the drive, you will find memo from our engineering department dated March 28, 23. In regards to that, I would like for you, before the next meeting or before the end of the public hearing process, is to review one of his items pertaining to the driveway itself and the access in relation to the adjoining property owners to see if there possibly could be some improvements made because of the tremendous amount of activity that now will be taking place at that entrance versus what exists today. And I don't know if you have his memo in front of you, I don't have a copy here, it is located in the drive. So instead of going through that now, if you want to take a moment and look at that and in relation to our next hearing, we really appreciate it.
We can certainly do that, thank you.
It's dated March 28th, I believe, or March 27th.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all I had for you this evening, sir, thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to point out to staff and the commission and the applicant also is that the updates that we've received for the record, first is the site plan, which was dated 3/9/23. Michael's comment letter dated 3/9/23, the traffic study that was resorted was submitted by the above dated 3/21/23. We have an engineering memo in the drive in the record dated 3/28/23. There's also some aerial photos you will notice in the record. There also is pictures of the adjacent residential properties. From the public, we have two items of correspondence. One from Ronald and Julie Swordcheck dated 3/28/23 and one dated 3/28/23 from a town Cordell, Cordillo, I believe. Also, just so the commission is aware, we did receive a traffic study last night. Yeah, I submitted it to our engineering department. Also note for the record too, that one of our engineers is in a previous service was a traffic engineer. So they're in the process of reviewing that. The final comments from the Health Department haven't been submitted yet, and hopefully they will be received within the next week. The chair, I think, will be for turning it over to the public, I think the chair will address how this meeting will continue in the future. Just bring it out now in case somebody has any issue.
So we've reached agreement with the applicant to continue the hearing until our next meeting. And we are going to impose, based on our agreement, that there will be no communications with us with regards to this application afternoon on April the 5th to give us sufficient time to respond or take any other actions we may need to before our next meeting.
Which will be April 11th.
And just to make this clear, Mr. Chair, that's not only for the applicant's submission, but the intent, any public, that's also the
So at this time, I will open the floor to the public, I do ask, which kind of waste some time on, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite finished.
I'm sorry.
I apologize, I was thrown off a little bit by the use of this room this evening. There was just a few items I wanted to address in regards to the last public hearing. The first item would be in regards to Allison St. Germain's comments. She was kind enough to provide links, which were very appreciative, along with your comments. So in regards to Allison, Allison included a link for the 2007 Plan for Conservation and Development. And she pointed out that there was a link that showed the area seventeen Whitney Road is marked red for commercial and not yellow or orange as the map shows residential. The link that she pointed out was a map in the 2007 plan. The map that she is referring to is called an existing land use or existing conditions plan. It's not the zoning map of the town about this, so it was just so showing presently what the existing conditions were on the property. The current zoning map with the date of 2014 shows seventeen Whitney Road is double R10, that is correct. Seventeen Whitney Road is double R10, some proof when it was changed by this commission and proof that the tax assessor has changed the tax classification. I cannot find any proof that his own change was made in regards to this property. Against the assessor as far as its classification and its industrial or its use. And the assessor's response was that she assesses property according to the use, not to the zone. So her exact quote to me was, when the assessor assesses a property, it is assessed at the highest and best use. So in this instance, airport industrial use is the higher invest use versus a residential use that does exist on the property. So that's covering most of your questions regarding the assessment. Since safety is a critical issue, she was submitting to the record the 2018 traffic study by the town, which shows accidents and fatalities around the proposed project. And wanted to know when the new study is complete, the new study is not, not complete yet. We're having a preliminary meeting on Friday for data and design work. And I'll have a better idea of when we'll be having our input meetings from the general public and stakeholders. Be able to provide the answers to that. And, okay. I apologize for interrupting you.
That's fine.
Truly give.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to open it to the public. Once again, I would ask that if you've spoken on this subject in the past, you're more than welcome to speak again. But I would ask that you speak only if you have something new to add to the benefit of the commission and the other people in the audience. So if we have anybody in the room that would like to speak, please state your name and come forward so you can be heard. Say your name and your address, and then address your comments or questions to the board.
Sorry.
Ms. Germain.
Allison St. Germain, 14 Elgin Ave. I did read all of the materials on the Google Drive this afternoon before coming in. And I do have a question for the applicant about the traffic study that was submitted. I just want to be clear, so the numbers, you didn't have numbers for Whitney Road, but you had Elgin from October of 2020. And the number of trips daily were 345. And so estimated this property alone will then bring that average volume, I'm sorry, was you will bring, Elgin was 450 in October 2020. This project alone will bring in 345 trips. So that's like a 75% increase in daily traffic on Elgin, because we don't have Whitney. So that, I just want to clarify that number, it's not that we're going from 450 daily trips to 345, it's that we have 450 now, and this project will bring in that much more, I just want to, that is specifically, and since the engineer is here, I thought that would be a
Thank you. Anyone else?
Cynthia McCorquandale, 19 Elgin Avenue. The only new thing that I want to talk about is a couple of things that I heard, which has to do with the tax assessor and the industrial versus residential. So, and maybe I'm missing something, but if something is zoned industrial or it's being used as industrial and it's a better value tax-wise, why would one want to diminish that with residential, it doesn't make any sense to me. I might be missing something. The other thing is with the traffic study is it seems incomplete without Whitney. And additionally, I believe in the Beppo Forward Plan, there was data that had to do with the, what's really important is the entrance from Grassy Plain to Whitney, which involves the state road with a state, we don't even have a green turn signal for that, and we use it all the time. So I think that's a very dangerous avenue, had the highest crash incident in Beppo at that time, and that was, you know, five years ago. So that's really important too, we don't have control over what the state will or won't do as far as roads. It just, I'm just going to say this, it's been just a I don't know, like a philosophical viewpoint is that it just still baffles me, why? And I'm a capitalist, I believe that people should be able to develop their own land. But I'm putting myself in that position, and I'm just thinking, I could not with a clear conscience do what's been done, not just the first proposal, but then to actually come in with 830G as a cudgel, and that's what it's being used at, it's literally saying, okay, you said no, now you're going to have to say yes. I listened to all those hearings that they had up for the work, live, ride bill. It's kind of scary. You guys won't even exist anymore in the equation if that goes through. And you guys, and I'm just going to say this, I've got nothing to lose. You guys need to have a spine and say to yourselves, are we willing to fight this on principle? Or are we just cowering to the state because it's going to cost money? It's just going to cost more than money in the end, it's going to cost the community. And I truly believe that between both projects, focusing on Whitney, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Our 13 Willow Street. We've all heard my objections to this, to the pass, so I'll try to focus on just the health and safety issues, which I guess we're supposed to be focusing on, right? I believe it was the last meeting that Beth had recommended that, you know, a right turn out of the property be made, you know, coming out on the Whitney intersection. You know, coming out on the uh Whitney intersection. As a past fire chief in this town and firefighter in this town for thirty seven years, I can tell you for a fact. That that stretch of road from that intersection of fifty three and Grassy Plain to Timber Oaks. Is the deadliest stretch of road in this town. There have been more fatal accidents than anywhere else in this town. So that in itself is a horrible idea. You're increasing the traffic in that neighborhood by seventy five percent. That seems like a a safety problem. The dust complaints. The applicant has made numerous dust complaints over the years. You know, it's a health problem. It's not magic, very dust. It hasn't gone away. Gold has always had a time sprinkler system since the day they moved into the property. It 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 just occurred that they started sprinkling the property, you know, in recent months. They they've been. They've been the property owners there for fifteen years plus now. And they've always sprinkled the property to the time sprinklers. So like you said, it's not magic, very dust. It hasn't gone away. It's still there. You know, currently my my daughter is being evaluated for growth on her lung. Is it associated to the dust? We don't know yet. Is it cancer? We don't know yet. But it seems like a health problem to me. If you know, it's it's something that needs to be considered. And then um, you know, with no real plant for any privacy plantings or or any realistic fencing along the western border of property. Or the parking comes, you know, within feet of the adjoining property to the west. That that seems like a health a health problem for the neighboring properties. And you're gonna be interfering with sweet patterns for the for the adjoining property. You know, you have parking, you have twelve parking spaces within twenty feet of the adjoining property or. Ten feet higher than the adjoining property's bedrooms. Again, that's a health problem. That's all I have for tonight.
Hi Nancy Sudik to Rich Daryl. I'm obviously here to ask you to please oppose the on. The application, but I have three reasons. On the first one, I know Mr. Mizuka, he he definitely addressed this. But I'm not completely convinced that this issue is going to resolve. The business next door to Saunders' business was a subject of multitude complaints. For sixteen years by the Saunders, they complained about the continuous drift of stone dust, which they thought was very unhealthy and just plain dirty and unpleasant. According to the multitude of written complaints which continued. Up to a couple of years ago, this problem has been unresolved and as far as I know continues today. This is an unhealthy atmosphere to build forty two units with people that will be occupying and being right next door. To the to this particular um hazard, as I call it. The Saunders thought it was a bad situation for themselves and and complained for at least sixteen years and on this, I completely agree with the Saunders. The second issue I have is the development is large and it's close to fragile wetlands. All wetlands are fragile and they require humans to safeguard them and not to exploit them and if for no other reason. I don't think anything should be built this close to wetlands. And number three is the sheer number of units. It was big enough to start with and now it's forty two. That will require more than sixty parking places because nobody can tell me that in forty two units, there won't be eighty four adults. Or at least some close to that. Where are they going to park? Where will these vehicles park when the lot is full on the narrow streets where they're gonna impact all the cars driving up and down the road? Or impact children and adults riding bikes, walking dogs, jogging. I mean, I just heard you all talking about traffic studies, et cetera. And I'm thinking, yeah, but the traffic studies are have been done when there aren't cars parked on the road and there. There will be. I don't see how there could not be cars parked on the road if you have forty two units. So what happens in the winter then when all the cars need to be off the road for overnight for still plows and road maintenance? And for these reasons and many others, I urge you, please deny the application. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? We have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Uh we appear to have Paula Antolini. She has her hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
Hello, uh good evening, Commission. Sorry, Paula Antolini, Jacob Lane. Um I'd like to talk about soil safety. Um I read through the. Soil experts report from the applicant. And I didn't see anything as far as testing for toxic substances. And considering the fact that as Nancy mentioned, um for sixteen years, the applicant was complaining about stone dust. I would imagine that there was plenty of stone dust that fell onto the ground. Now, I'm not talking about the issue of solving the problem of the airborne dust. I'm talking about what fell onto the ground. And um so I'm kind of surprised that there was no toxic study done. And um furthermore, I think that. There should be a study done on the town side. And not trust, even though I'm sure he's an expert, I would want to hire someone to study the the soil. Only because this is an unusual case of sixteen or more years and those are only the years that the applicant complained. Um it could have been thirty years for all we know. Um but there is the issue of all that toxic dust falling to the ground and it's well known that airborne, it's very. Uh limiting on your health. So if it's in the ground, we have children that are going to be playing in the grass and. If there is any more dust that does fly in the air, um it's going to go on to the cars, et cetera. I'm not convinced that the system that was set up, the sprinklers, is enough. Um because due to the letters that were in this file under complaints. In the uh the town records, um the systems failed, they're broken. They only go on every half hour and they're subject to so many things uh that could happen. I'd like to know where the water runs off to. That sprinkled on the dust has to go somewhere and that could land in the wetlands. Um I think there should be a study on that. Um but my main concern is the soil, uh what's in the soil at this point. I think that's a very important issue. And as Nancy was saying. The applicant complained for sixteen years that this was an unacceptable condition. And yet now wants to build forty something apartments. For people to live in. So that's my issue.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Zoom? All that would like to speak? Any other hands, David?
I'm not seeing any other raised hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commission, any questions?
Oh Diane Ryan.
I'm sorry, forgive me. Diane Ryan has her hand raised.
Hi Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Drive. Um I just had a question about the traffic study. It was done in October of twenty twenty. Um that's in the middle of the pandemic when many people were not working, um driving their cars anywhere. Uh it seemed a little bit outdated and maybe inaccurate. Um so that was one question I had. I was wanted to know uh as far as the sprinkler system goes, um what happens with that in the wintertime? Um because the sprinkler system doesn't work in the wintertime, so it seems like that part of the year would be. Um not working properly for mitigating any dust. Um the, as far as the traffic study goes as well, um they were talking about parking on both sides of the road. I don't think the road is wide enough for people to park on both sides of the road and have people driving there. When we went for the walk through in July, people go very fast around that curve. Um I think people who are walking or children who are on bicycles may not even be able to be seen. Um and uh you know, the site distances, I think are gonna be changed if you have people parking on the road. So that's something that should be considered for site distances. If you have a tall. SUV or something like that parked because we have those kind of problems pulling out of lots of areas in Bethel. Um and. I guess the uh. I guess that that traffic study was done uh by um by Scott who was on here. And he's the one who um was the civil engineer. Oh no, yeah, he's a civil engineer and traffic engineers hired by the Saunders. And I also would would recommend that the town do their own study. And deal with the state as far as the light on uh Grassy Plain. Making turns into there. Um and I know also that there had been concerns on the Bethel Forward Plan. They talked about sidewalk concerns. Um I know that hasn't been addressed on here and and I think you talked about the each of the. Uh homeowners were responsible for the sidewalk in front of their own homes or something, so. That still hasn't been addressed since the twenty eighteen um Bethel Forward Plan. And I brought that up another time and I don't think that's ever still been dealt with. The fire emergency, I guess now, now they're saying they've got a truck that can. Accommodate the fire if they have to get to the back of the building, but I'm still concerned about that because on Stony Hill, they were requiring. The affordable housing there to um have more room behind there to get the traffic or the fire truck behind there. So I'm still concerned about that, that safety issue. So there's still a lot of safety issues that I'm concerned about and I I'm asking that you. Deny the application. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom call would like to speak?
Not seeing any hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Go to the applicant.
Just in case, Scott, was there anything, uh Scott Hesketh, is there anything that you wanted to comment? Um not asking that you do, but from what you heard tonight, is there anything you wanted to to present? You bet that you're not at the next session of the year.
Well, uh certainly, let me just uh answer a couple of the questions. Um traffic volumes. Yes, according to the Department of Transportation, the background traffic volumes on Elgin Road. Um are four hundred and fifty on a daily basis. We are projecting to generate three hundred and forty five trips from our development. Uh I would not say that's a seventy five percent increase. Um we're projecting a distribution of seventy percent in one direction and thirty percent in the other. Which would be an increase to individual segments of roadway of about two hundred and forty or a hundred and five vehicles. Which if uh the four fifty is a uh an accurate number, increase of fifty three percent in one direction and twenty three percent in the other. Um the traffic volumes uh do reflect October twenty twenty from the DOT. Um however, the traffic volumes in October twenty were the same as they were in October of two thousand and thirteen. Uh four hundred and fifty on an average daily traffic volume basis. So um did not show any growth rate uh in in that uh in that timeframe. Um so we believe that the the counselor relatively accurate, even if they were doubled, the levels of service. Of the uh intersection would still be level of service A or worst case level of service B. So um from a traffic volume standpoint, I I don't think changing that number would be significant. Of course, it would reduce the percentage increases if the traffic volumes were significantly higher today than they were previously. Uh I don't believe them to be. Um in in terms of um. Uh I think there's parking allowed on both sides of the roadway, um the the entire length of the roadway. And uh to the extent that uh vehicles block site distances out of all the other site driveways, there's potentially could do the same with this location. Um uh I I don't think it's been a uh a difficulty over. Over time, as there doesn't seem to be a a significant uh accident history in this location. Um vehicles traveling faster on the curve. I I don't know if they travel very faster on the curve. The roadways posted at twenty five. I believe the eighty fifth percentile speed is measured by the Department of Transportation was in the range of twenty six. Miles an hour, if I remember correctly. I would think that one would have to slow down to get around the corner. I'm thinking twenty miles per hour is probably the uh the eighty fifth percentile around the around the corner. Um I I don't know if that's excessively fasted. Perhaps there are some who are traveling too fast for the for the conditions, but that's true in all. All roadways and all towns uh throughout the state of Connecticut. Um. Those are the questions I heard in terms of uh traffic volumes. Um I don't have a response to the uh to the commission about the uh the driveway apron, but. We will have something for you at the uh at the next or before the next public hearing. So. At this time, that's that's all I have in terms of the traffic comments.
Well, all I would have is um this issue about adjoining property really is a red herring. Your regulation, you zone this property for residential use. There's residential uses uh elsewhere all over the neighborhood. If there's a. A problem with that and you heard from from Mike earlier that after a number of complaints, they did put a remedy in that that satisfied them. Respect to the dust, but if there's something a neighbor is doing with their property, that's not a basis to deny. A person who owns residentially zoned property from using that property for for residential purposes and and under your regulations. You're not a environmental protection agency. And again, if there was any issues with the dust, it's the neighbor whose doors should get knocked down, not not. You know, our door, so to speak, telling us that that we wouldn't be able to, uh my client wouldn't be able to to use uh use their land, but. Um yeah, I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to add.
The only thing I want to add, Mike Mizuka, for the record, just with regard to the uh fire safety, there is no requirement. Or access for emergency vehicles to go around the building. The building is sprinkler. And there's different requirements, less restrictive if the building is sprinkler because one of the most um. Beneficial safety features you can put into a building is having a sprinkler. And the fire marshal has reviewed this plan. We had the second means of ingress for emergency purposes and he has issued a letter saying that he has approved. The plan as it's drawn.
Um with the um traffic, Mrs. Scott, I can't remember your last name. I'm sorry. Uh I guess, um you said you had no information or couldn't gather information about Whitney. Uh being that you seem to say, correct me if I'm wrong. That a lot of the traffic leaving this site is going to go. Say toward Danbury. So to me, that means they're going to be using Whitney. A lot because they'll have to go down that street and make that turn. So could you make it a a bit bigger effort to get more information about Whitney? Because I know there are more accidents at that uh traffic light heading south.
I I don't know if any information is available.
We are onto a state road? No?
Uh there's certainly traffic volumes available on the state roads themselves. Um the state counts all state highways once every three years. Um they count some local roadways. Uh included in their database was the counts on Elgin. They did not have any information on on Whitney. Um I assume that Whitney and Elgin carry similar volumes of traffic, which is why um. We we uh one of the reasons we presented the Elgin traffic volumes in the report. Um and in fact, we for the analysis at the site driveway, we assumed that all the traffic uh on Elgin. Um that well, the higher volume. It would be, we assumed the higher of the two volumes of traffic on Elgin Road. Passed by our site driveway in both directions. So if they're, if the peak hour count on Elgin Road was forty five and it was. Thirty trips in one direction and fifteen in the other, we assumed that there was thirty trips in both directions passing our site driveway. Which I think is a pretty conservative analysis in terms of of the levels of service at our site driveway. Um I think you you got both roadways are similar with the volume uh or the number of housing units on each one. Um I'm I'm not sure Elgin's a major cut through roadway. I'm sure there's some cut through traffic using utilizing it. But I would think the traffic volumes on one roadway would be very similar to the traffic volumes on the other. Um so but there are no conduct counts currently available. If if counts were needed, uh they would have to be uh. It would have to be gotten um through through new uh new observation.
Point of information, it's Elgin Avenue, not Road.
I was just asking if it was possible, we'd appreciate it. If it then, then I guess there was no. If it then I guess there was nothing we can do that.
Quite understood.
We've heard a number of times. Um, neighbors suggesting. That there is a serious inconvenience. With the parking that is so close to the neighbors' homes. I haven't heard anything. Or let me put it this way. What do you propose to alleviate those difficulties?
I believe we have a sufficient number of parking spaces on our site to accommodate. Uh, the the number of vehicles we anticipate at our particular at our site. So uh. Uh, that we would not be exacerbating parking conditions on on the local roadway. Um, I assume that the most of the parking on local roadway are residents or people visiting those residents. So um, you know, it it's a. It's 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 not a it's not a condition of our making, and I'm not sure that we have a way to address that. Um, without this. Without um making life more difficult for the for the residents of the roadway. Um, I'm sure they don't want us coming over there telling their friends that they can't park in front of their your houses when they come to visit them. Um, so I I I don't expect the, we don't expect to exacerbate the problem because we have plenty of parking on our site. And and I'm not sure that there's anything we could do to address that particular situation in front of other people's houses.
Okay, I I apologize, I was not. Um, I wasn't clear. I was talking about the parking with the visual of parking lights. Of cars parking pulling out, going directly into. The windows and homes of the people that live adjacent. That's what I was referring to. I'm sorry, I was not clear. I would also suggest, by the way, that. Um. The number of parking spaces. That you're providing. Is of you and the number of cars that may need to park on Whitney or Elgin, quite frankly, would be of your making. It's it's not going to go up because the people are living there now. It's going to go up because people won't have a place to park within the complex. So, but if you could, um, if you could speak to the lighting issue.
That's more of a life planning issue than a traffic issue, so.
Okay.
Lights are good, lights are gonna come on the vehicles. There's no way we're gonna stop vehicles from from having lights in the front of them, so I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, the reason I say this is that if I recall. When we were talking about the lighting around the school complex along Judd Avenue. And um going entering into the school complex. Um, changes were made. To accommodate the people that lived across the street from the school complex. Is there anything that can be done? Shading. Trees, bushes, something to keep. These things. For to keep the lights away from the people that are living there.
You mean adjacent to the properties?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're talking about is fencing, solid fence, solid vinyl fencing, six feet in height. Strawberry things of that nature. So when you're pulling in and parking the car, for example, the little house to the, I don't know where, to the east. The little ranch. You want solid fencing there.
Mr. Ingram's.
Mr. Ingram's property, there's another good example. Anytime someone is using the the parking areas within the complex itself. Take that into consideration with the adjoining property owners. And and ensure that you have at least six. I was gonna talk about fencing anyways, when we got to that. Sure again, but you need to review that. I agree.
And I just have one other question, and this quite frankly doesn't have to do with health or safety, but maybe it does. And I've asked this before, and I've never really gotten a good answer. How does this project enhance the neighborhood? How does it live? In conjunction with small homes? What 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 is the what is the enhancement to the neighborhood?
Enhancement of the neighborhood is providing good safe housing, number of those units, affordable housing. Um, in accordance with state mandate that all towns encourage affordable housing, um, so. Combination of good, safe, affordable, and good, safe market rate homes. As uh Mr. Zook had said in an earlier hearing, it's also a good transition. You've got the industrial zone nearby, so you go from an industrial zone to. A a higher density residential than a transition into the lower density, how is that?
Thank you.
Not much has been mentioned about the total number of people who live on both streets and maybe Bethel at large. Who might be affected negatively. Their mental health. Of this project. And. It might bother a lot of people a little bit, may bother a few people a lot. But. They should be taken into consideration. Because their life is stable the way it is now. And if this project goes in, their health could be affected in ways that we won't even understand down the road. That's all I got to say.
Hey, Commissioner, any other? Not like I reached it. We have somebody on the Zoom call.
Bob.
Bob?
Yes. Bob and Rich.
Okay.
Bob, you're up.
Okay, I I have nothing to do, no questions right now.
Alright.
Sorry, guys, calling in from thunderstorming Florida, but it's warm. Um, no additional questions for me.
Steph would like to bring up a few points. Um, in regards to the driveway, when I spoke at the last meeting, the interest was. Really from a standard point of view of the main driveway is entering and exiting. And it's a straight line going down Elgin Avenue. So in my opinion, the majority of the traffic. Is gonna go for a beeline down Elgin Avenue. What I was looking for was a way to split up the traffic. And to send some of it down Whitney Road, and that was the intent of asking for more information regarding the traffic report. And I thank you for that. As far as the fencing, um, I think that. You, we really have to take a close look to that in regards to the adjacent property owners. And the type of fencing that's used and the landscaping, the shrubbery. Because now what you were doing is putting a very large apartment house into a single family zone. Where you have small modest houses that you can see. In the Google Drive are pictures of the adjoining property owners, and I assume that that's what prompted some of the conversation this evening. And it's for the protection of the adjoining neighbors, lighting pollution, lighting does affect someone with such a a tremendous change. In land use from the present use. Um, also in regards to the dust. As far as the dust is concerned. If you go through the complaint file, you will see that the constant complaints have been about this. You will also see that it was, it's always been a matter of the sprinkler system. Is working or it's not working, or the timer isn't set correctly every time the zoning department has gone out. The galls have gone out of their way to try to make improvements. From what I recall from my own memory, the last time that uh the first time that we had a conversation in regards to this application. It was in February of twenty, February ninth, somewhere's around there in twenty twenty-one. Um, I do recall I do went out in May of that year with one of the owners. And spoke with Mr. Golf about the timing regarding the. Sprinklers. I also met with with the owner present. We also reviewed how the sprinkler system works. Uh, what improvements could be made with as far as timing of it? But the actual timing that is if existence from what I recall now is exactly what was originally approved during the special permit process. Um, you'll notice in some of my notes within the complaint file, you will see that. I have, I was out there making observation for hours. It was on for fifteen, it would go on every fifteen minutes, and I so noted that in the complaint file. I think the intent. Of issuing tho- that complaint file for the commission is to. Take into consideration the industrial use that is. In in existence next to this property, the industrial use that already exists on this property. And now we are changing the use from that industrial use to residential. So but and also by doing that, you want to take into consideration the proximity, anytime you were developing a residential property. You want to take into consideration the other uses that surround that property. You want to develop. Make a development that is the best for the pre- for the residents. Adjacent to you and for the residents that are going to live there. So why you would want to construct or show a building that is fifteen feet. From the property line where you would show mechanicals that are less than fifteen feet. I can't recall off the top of my head. From a property line with. Decks and things that are going to be overlooking and industrial used property in the industrial zone is difficult to understand. And I think. Myself, and I think from the previous application, which is also part of the record and part of a T O D site plan. I think like comments relating to proximity and other alternatives that could be looked at. Was a concern of this commission and of the general public. And unfortunately, one of the main concerns is. The proximity to the industrial zone and the industrial use associated with this property. And I just wanted to mention that for the record. Um, that I do feel that the dust is an issue still. Um, because of the industrial use. Uh, somebody had also mentioned something about the sprinklers in the overtime, and if I recall correctly. Uh, I do not believe that the sprinkler system is a heated system. And also, since it is not a heated heated system. I would, I believe that the sprinkler system is not wrong in the winter. And it's a two-way street, and I understand that, but the town of Bethel has done its best to try to enforce. The special permit that was granted. Back in the early two thousands, I can't remember the date. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll ask one more time. Will we continue the hearing? Are there any more questions either from the public or anybody on Zoom? Or the commission?
Do you just want to also go over? One more time. What we're gonna do for the next day right here. Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure because that's the most important.
There's no other question than that. I will um continue to very. But in doing so, I will remind the public. Uh, that we are closing off all communications and. Agreement we reached with the applicant, there'll be no uh information received afternoon on April the fifth.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, I I.
Uh, it's, this is a very important announcement, David. Excuse us one second, please.
Okay.
Just again, there'll be no communications accepted by the commission or the land use office. Afternoon on April the fifth. And with that, I will continue the hearing.
The, is, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Diane Ryan has her hand raised on Zoom.
Ms. Ryan?
I failed to, uh, Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Drive. Um, I failed to uh mention earlier about, um, there's a a snow pile that's to the left of the dumpster. Which is between the dumpster and the green area. Um, which is supposed to be a play area or whatever for kids, and um I don't, or I don't know for people, whoever is gonna live there. Um, so my concern on that is that green area, besides being somewhat close to where the dust might come from that other property. Um, is near the. Near the snow pile that might be there with, you know, whatever contaminants that are that are in the area, you know, closer to the stream and the wetlands. Um, and also, excuse me, the um. The dumpster being right next to the handicap spot um and the the snow pile, I'm just concerned that that is going to be. Uh, taken up by snow and everything else. So I think that's another. Safety issue between the um. You know, whatever gets into the the green area and the wetlands, um, and also uh the handicap spot. That's the only thing I had forgotten to mention.
Thank you. Comment from the applicant. One more time, and the last time.
No, you were the middle of, um, I think you're beyond that point, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
I think we made it very clear. David was kind enough to catch Diane Ryan's comments. I would, I would. Continue with what you were trying to give the general public as far as information. Our next meeting.
Public hearing is continued until our next meeting on April the eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Chair, members of the commission.
We'll leave it recess. Two minutes, we have two minutes, sir.
Motion to reset. All in favor? Make a motion to resume the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Next on the agenda is public hearing. Commission initiated amendments, T O D overlay.
To appear March sixteenth and March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Public notice, the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on commission initiated amendments to the Town of Bethel zoning regulations. March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M in Congress Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut. Reduce height requirement for the T O Ts of the zone from four stories to three stories. And the tier, the tier D zone, if the underlying zone is R ten or R R ten or R M O. The dimensional standard requirement for a single family home or two family home shall apply. The changes in their entirety can be located on the Town of Bethel's website and in the Town clerk's office of the Town of Bethel. The public may send comments via regular mail and email, the landnews@bethelconnecticut.gov. Parkley for hearing is located in the rear of the building, hence being chairman.
That I'll turn it over to Rebecca Wagner, staff for summary.
Yes, um, there's one technical better I want to say was brought to our attention, and that is in regards to the legal notice. There was a neglect to say that um. One of the changes that are being proposed is density from thirty to twenty units. And so we will have to renotice that small portion of the. Regulations, which is a big portion of the regulation, and have the meet at the hearing at another time. Um, my suggestion is to have that hearing on. The first reading in May. Through the calendar. May ninth? Yes, we could do that. May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
And that's just that component of it.
Yes, um, we may have another component. In regards to that too, dealing with um. Uh, you had had a discussion on usable open space, but we we can do that one more meeting and maybe at that. Okay? So could you schedule that now before we? Or keep that in mind and we'll schedule it after this hearing. I apologize. Um, in regards to the regulations that are being proposed for the T O D, they're pretty self-explanatory. Uh, but they are, I I do have a couple of comments to make. In regards to this. Uh, one of the reasons in when you are changing the zoning regulations, you. Have some of your faces. Is based on your plans. The T O D master plan, which was adopted in twenty sixteen. And our present. Plan of conservation development from twenty twenty. I'm reminded mission that the master plan is an appendix to. The P O C D, so a lot of my references with arts are from there. Um, in the master plan. It's, it says here. Um, the new zoning regulations will provide property owners with the needed flexibility of height. While also providing community with a certain predictability of form and character. That's from page ninety-two. Proposed regulations stress form and character as stated in the T O D master plan by reducing the height to the underlying zone. To keep. It in conformance with a residential, single family or two family. Um, under recommendations and actions, the proposed amendments still conform to the T O D plan pertaining to minimum dimensional standards. Such as lot size and width. But. Aids in the general conformity of scale and height within a residential neighborhood. As noted in the implementation portion of the action plan, items under policy number seven, bullets three and seven. At the same time, the commission recognizes as the master plan. Master T O D plan states, under implementation. Established. Established recommended benchmarking performance measures to evaluate and monitor master plan recommendations. Identify areas requiring changes and recommended recommend modifications. And that's basically what you were doing this evening. Within the R ten, double R ten and R M O, property owners will follow the zoning dimensional code. Pertaining to all aspects of the T O D code with two exceptions, and I just keep saying this to emphasize. Height and form to the general public, the best way to describe the form changes. Are we are limiting form to the standards used to construct a single family home? Or a two family home? In a residential zone in an R R ten, our double R ten or R M O. Is listed in section I of the T O D regulations. This does not li- limit the opportunity to increase the density of a property. But clearly takes into consideration the surrounding residential neighborhoods and the desire to enhance properties while preserving. Architectural features by blending in with the existing structures. I apologize, I'm a little off. Um this evening, but um. That's why it's not written. Or my notes, and that's all I have for you this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm all open. To the floor. If anybody has any question or comments, please state your name and your address and pose your question or admit your comment.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. John Lennon, sixteen old Turnpike Road. I spent twenty years on that side of the table and was part of every plan that was put together. What documentation do you have that got us tonight to re entertain the T O D?
I don't have anything.
In regards to documentation, I would I would say the documentation that we have is the experiences that we have had uh as a commission. It's my belief and I believe it's the commission's belief that in your single family and two family zones. That consideration, we never considered that there would be the possibility of. Extremely dense developments that did not follow the architectural. And regulations that we have under the T O D. So because. There has been a misinterpretation of the T O G regulations pertaining to a single family and a two family zone, we felt it was important. To emphasize the form associated with that. Now, the form is the different types of houses and structures that can appear on a property. It does not say that um. I mean, it does say with a lot, you have you stop thinking of a lot in terms of ten thousand square feet. In a in a in the form, right? In your dimensional standards, you think of it as smaller. So in other words, the purpose of the exercise is to consistently maintain the existing architecture in the neighborhood. Within an R ten and a double R ten zone and changes like this are not uncommon. For a commission to make. Under the under their plants. Uh for another example, that would be changes that we have made pertaining to uh the Route Six area. Um we adopted a regulation pertaining to heightened stories. That was even not going along with. The Route Six study and the P O C D, but we found that it was more consistent to have um. Site plans pertaining to residential developments, none see. Three stories, whereas we have just changed it to four stories. We went back to these walls.
I just have a point of. I'm sorry, since it's a back and forth, are we going to do a hearing format where we?
We're doing a hearing format.
Okay, so all.
Uh we are, I am just addressing. It it's an opportunity to address.
Well.
And I had the nod of the chair to do so, so I was.
Fair enough. It's just point of order that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Say anything you'd like, Mr..
Thank you. So the reason I asked the question is when I sat on the commission. And part of the T O D study, I didn't have an opinion. I respect everybody's opinion. And and you know, quite frankly, I have an opinion for everything in this town, but. We ex- we relied on experts to come up with testimony and then we as a commission decided what was going to work for people or not. So I don't think the commission's opinion is great enough to start deciding that the T O D study that currently is in place should be put on the shelf and never used again. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time coming up with a study that was going to work for all of Bethel. So I think it's important to remember that there's no reason the money that was spent to have a report that's going to sit on the shelf. Because a stakeholder or a property owner now cannot make it work for his property. There was a reason why the town decided we needed a T O D downtown to be next to the railroad because it was going to help make Bethel affordable. And make it grow the way Bethel wanted to grow. So I think the commission should consider the comments tonight. And and postpone, maybe making an actual decision based on what your opinions are. And get experts to come in here and decide with you what works and what doesn't work for the town.
Appreciate that input. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Saint Germain, fourteen Elgin Ave. And respectfully, I don't have all my data here with me, but a group of residents did try um to bring together a group of panel last night. From both sides, there's been a lot of information coming from Hartford. Um with regards to affordable housing, how that relates to transit oriented districts, there is a lot of information. Now, as we're on the other side of pandemic. Again, I am not an expert. I'm a resident, a concerned citizen that lives in the area as well. And so. Again, to the point of the number of things that have come up and along in the world, in our world of Bethel. There is data out there. So again, we tried to have a very um. Balanced panel, um desegregate Connecticut, which is a group that is looking at how can we expand affordable housing here in the state? Unfortunately, he didn't attend and wasn't on the panel and was given every opportunity to do that. Whereas on the other side, Connecticut, one sixty nine strong, has a multitude of information about. How communities like ours are going to be impacted by the fair share building development that. Is being pushed down from Hartford to communities like ours. So. Again, there is a lot of data out there. These are changes to regulations to make things make sense for Bethel. If any of you are residents like me and you go from one end of the T O D Greenwood Ave to the other end. We don't live in high rise apartment. Communities, it's not more than four stories. So this is. A local decision that we can make here to make things fit our community. Again, back to the master plan, I work in higher education and there is no organization I work for that takes their plan and sits on the shelf and doesn't work the plan. I fault us for not working the plan. If part of the T O D is to increase and be able to have more people access to the railway, part of that plan said. We should look and we should have another at grade railway crossing. Do we have it yet down Durant near there? No, we don't. It also said that we should have increased sidewalks and infrastructure, bike lanes. Do we have that? No, we don't. We've also lived through unprecedented times. I think we can all agree to that. So again. Changes like this are great because these are local things because we know how big things are in our downtown area. Hartford doesn't, right? But another smarter thing to do too could be to press pause, right? There are things that are happening here, things that have happened in the world that have shifted, and we have brought that up and have been. Talked about, why couldn't we pause and put a moratorium on pieces that are coming so then you can get it right? Because once that empty lot is built on, is that going to get torn down? And rebuilt? Again, you want to be able to do that, right? So all respect to the work that came before us because it was amazing groundwork there. But I don't think we've worked the plan. We don't have the infrastructure in place. And these are small changes to make things a little bit more reasonable for the Bethel that we live in, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia McCorpenell nineteen Elgin Avenue. Um, there is so much coming from Hartford right now. Um I've watched a lot of hearings. There's a bill, a House Bill six one seven oh that. Is is going to take out of zoning the word character and call it physical site. Um. Physical site. Oh, I can't remember. It's not going to be character. There will be no character in the town. They're also promoting the fair share, the work, live, ride, which is an astounding piece of legislation because. It assumes that people take the train. And as Alison said, things have shifted so much. And again, I agree. Nothing against all the work that was put in it, but you know, the way I think about it, it's like my first marriage didn't work out. Uh we said till death do us part. Nobody died. Um but we got divorced. I mean, things sometimes don't work out. They don't work out the way you planned. So things are shifting here and we are not going to have the train ridership. I just don't think we are. The buses, they're empty. Uh I don't think it's because people aren't here to take the bus. I just think that it's just not the culture. We're shifting into a culture. And what we need more than anything else is a sense of community. There are pieces of property that are right in the T O D, but I guarantee you aren't even going to get built on or are going to get. Multi unit structures on it are right next to the train station. So I don't understand uh. I I understand also how a document like the the master plan and the P O D are not treated as living documents. I mean, they have to be looked at. We have to have the infrastructure in order to support the T O D. So there's there are things I appreciate all the thought that's going into what you're proposing, at least for some kind of. Little bit of uh adjustment, you know, is great, but I think we have to take a careful look at and and factor in Hartford, factor in reality. And possible development that's not going to turn out the way it originally was intended.
Hi, good evening. Um I'm Peter Olson. I'm not here representing anybody. Irish, please, Mr. Olson. Nine and four Testament Street.
He's losing four hundred an hour.
Yeah, I think you should all know that I do have clients own property in the G O D and the projects we're working on. That may be affected by this, but I'm not actually here on behalf of any. My comments really relate to the the whole language of the regulation, but I understand the density aspect will be pushed off until May, but I think my comments relate to both. Um and I don't think you should be having this hearing tonight if you had noticed in fact, you should just push the whole thing off and do it all at once because I think they're all integrated. So a- as Mr. Lennon stated, the Bethel Forward Plan was adopted in twenty sixteen. And more importantly, the work that you did in Bethel Forward, when you, I mean, the planning and zoning commission, I know you weren't all there. Um was relied upon and incorporated into the twenty twenty plan of development. Which you're required to do a plan of development every ten years. And you kind of got it passed from the state for doing a full plan of development process with workshops and, you know, full fully developed and though because you had done this work very recently. Um and so, you know, this is really only a couple of years old. Um here in twenty twenty three. So why is this important? In making a decision on any zone text or map amendment, the statutes require that you do three things. You must make such changes in consideration of plan of conservation and development. That's eight dash two B one. You're required to take into consideration the plan of conservation development and state on the record. Your findings on consistency with those change with each such plan. That's eight dash three B. And you're required to state how the proposed change is consistent with the plan of development. Eight dash three A. Now, the plan of development is different than the plan of conservation development, just to be clear. So simply, but in my opinion, these changes that you propose to make are not consistent with the plan of conservation development. Um despite the language that Ms. Wagner read to you. The planet of conservation development incorporating Bethel Boardland and very specific recommendations for property in the P O D. Now, every application that we file with you. If it's a special permit application, we have a narrative that describes how the special permit in accordance with the plan of conservation development. Site plans don't have that requirement, but map amendments, text amendments, we have to file a statement. How was this in accord? And that's it. You can make those findings I just spread. And I fully admit that many, many times the language in the plan of conservation development is very fuzzy. And we take what we can from it because it doesn't get down to the specificity that's required to make those statements. Um so we take what we can. We have general recommendations that encourage economic development, right? That's one of my favorites. I kind of base that a lot. But here, the plan is specific and provides the density for these areas, provides the form factors. Um everything is very specific. So I don't think the general language that's relied upon in the staff comments is going, it should override. The 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 specific nature of it. So, okay, let's say you want to change the plan of development. Statutes actually encourage this. You don't have to wait ten years. The statute states specifically, you should regularly review and maintain the plan of development. That's eight dash twenty three A. It's a good thing to do, and I've always thought, sitting down once a year and looking at all your recommendations. And putting checkmarks next to the ones you've accomplished and the ones you haven't figured out how to accomplish would be a good idea, but. Doesn't it? Um so it's not just to do it once every ten years and forget it. Uh and and by the way, the town can lose discretionary funding from the state if it doesn't adopt plan of development, if it doesn't regularly uh update it and make it. But there is a whole process to amend the plan of conservation development. You have to prepare the amendments. So let's just say you wanted to make these changes, right? And I'm not here telling you you can't make them. I'm here telling you there's a different process you have to follow. What you should do is initiate an amendment to the plan of conservation and development. Have some workshops, collect the data that members of the public have said is out there on the issue. Hire a professional, bring them in and have them look at the developments that have been approved and built and see how it's working under the plan. Find the developments you don't like. And say, this happened, how do we stop this? Put it all together, come up with the amendment to the plan. That amendment has to be reviewed by the board of selectmen. They have to have a public hearing on it. They can reject it. That would mean you could only adopt it by a two thirds majority. Um you would have to post it online sixty five days before the hearing. You have to have a public hearing. You have none of this. I think you should do it. But you should start from scratch and do it the right way. The process is designed to make sure that you're carefully engaged in your job as a planning commission. It's to protect property owners. From wild swings in what's allowed and not allowed on the property. It's to protect people who have invested in properties and are working towards development. That things just don't get pulled out from underneath them. And and have things that are allowed today not be allowed tomorrow. Um so, you you know, uh with all respect to back who I've worked with fifteen years and I really respect her opinion. We don't have that kind of a process with data, with analysis of the developments that have been built. With data from the state as to what's coming, that would encourage you to make a change like this to reduce the height and it may be perfectly valid to do that. I think you just need to do it the right way. However, one important legal point because I'm a lawyer and therefore I look at the nitty gritty. The reduction of the heightened dimensional standards of only some of the properties in the tier D overlay. Those in the R ten, double R ten and R M O would be illegal. That's because. The zoning enabling statute eight dash two. Has a provision in it that's called the uniformity provision. All zoning regulations should be uniform for each class or kind of building, structures or use of land throughout the district. So once you've applied the zoning district T O D to all these properties, you have to have the same regulations for all. You can't say. These properties have a different height, these properties have a different conventional standards. Just it violates eight dash two. Um so. There there is a way to get around that and do it in a different way. It's more complicated and you need. Different zone, basically. Um so, and so to make those comments. Again, I'm I'm mostly concerned about the density reduction because of the effect it has on my clients, but we'll talk about that more in the night. Yeah, if you wanted these changes, is there a way to do it? You should follow that right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Jan, we tend diamond afternoon. I had to hand out, I'm just going to give it to you and send it an email. Some of it's been covered. None of it, well, almost none of this what you're talking about. Thank you, Peter, because. That uniformity was the thing that I wanted to talk about. Um. And so my question, one of my comments was going to be that it's great if you're looking at. Heights of buildings in the R R ten and the R the um. R M O and all that. And lowering to three stories, but if you've got something overlaying industrial, you're actually raising it up to three stories. From two and a half. So while. It looks like it's coming down from four to three, you would actually be raising it up. From two and a half to three. Um. I agree with what Peter said. I think there's a process. I think it would be great to use that process. Do you want a moratorium while we do the process? Yeah, see, that's that's the problem. You know, we we're caught between. Obviously, having problems with the the way things were or weren't written initially. People coming up with things that nobody dreamed of. And now having to react to things. I think the only way to do it in a reasonable. Legal way is is to really do a buzz. I don't think. I don't, I know people don't want moratoriums, but I don't know that there's any other option there. Um, one thing I will say and. Piggybacking on Alison's comments, some of the people who know that I'm from Newbury, Massachusetts. And anybody in urban planning knows. The story of my small city, the size of Ethel. In in the nineteen sixties, we signed on to urban renewal. Got money. Uh, funded, started tearing down buildings, had a plan. And a bunch of very obnoxious, loud newcomers to the town started raising hell. And they didn't want this because they had come to this old Yankee City. Partly because of the architecture, mainly because of the architecture, because it was a very depressed economic community at the time. And they were saying, how can you do this? You can't. This, you're crazy. And. They fought and they fought and they fought and they won. And now urban planners going to new report and say, this is the way you should do things. Because they didn't listen to the urban planners of that time. They fought with Washington. I don't say to give back money. They had already bought out people's properties and raised buildings. Sometimes you just have to say, we made a mistake. And we need to rethink things. And and usually when you do that, you end up with something better. Than if you just go full steam ahead because we can't stop now. You know, we're too far down this road. They were so far down. You know, it was, it seemed like there was no return. And it's a good thing that they did it because otherwise I would have, I would come from a community. That looks exactly like um the new Boston City Hall. Instead of one of the most beautiful places in the country that other old cities like Portsmouth have caught me. And it's a thriving community now and unfortunately nobody can afford to live there because my host that costs. Four hundred thousand dollars here costs one point two million there for the same thing, but. It's been a success and it's beautiful place because they said, no, we've got to stop. We've got to. We've got to take this train and get on another rail.
You have any comments, Mr. Michael?
He goes first.
John Lennon sixteen old turbine. I just want to say that I agree with every comment in this room. Okay, you just need data to turn an opinion into actual data that drives a report. That's all I want to say.
Billy Michaels, twenty-seven and a half week with Avenue. Uh, I can't believe what you have to deal with. This is stressful. I'm sitting over here. I've been beating up at a town meeting for thirty-seven years. It looks like a cake wash.
Oh, I've seen you get beat up pretty good.
Since when I tried to take out the heart bus seventeen thousand dollar local gun infusion? Because I had no riders on the bus. I didn't know why they were taxing my house for an empty bus and it's only gotten worse. But uh, and so I'm not going to take up a lot of time. Things busy, I know. This is your, this is a world I'm not equipped to deal with, but what Cynthia said. There's a, there's a progressive left movement, a current of thought. That has taken over housing. And I'm I'm just, I'm not know a lot about this, but when I saw of it, that desegregate Connecticut, there's raps, raps of these organizations. That consider private, they consider single-family homes racist, classist. This is their language. This is like, and and they're going to extinct you. Because there's going to be state plans that destroy any sense of a hundred and sixty-nine local zoning, the local towns. It is massive to start from the bed and you're you are living through it and as Cynthia warned. I was two, I I I was at one, when I was physically there and then one that was Zoom. Where they said the length are taking the language away. And Mr. Olson pointed out language. It's really important. And when you can no longer use the word character to just to defend your a a a. A judgment that you make, a book you make and say, well, it's the character of the the the, you can't use it anymore. Architectural, yeah, they're destroying the language and they're to, it's to their advantage. So that's one thing. You know, I was against the T O D with that first meeting. I hated the charade. I called it a charade. I couldn't stand all this. And I know John loads. I'm pissed down in front. That's how big here I am.
That's right.
I think this is about a whole week. We're going to ride buses and walk, you know, I remember that. I'll get the empty, empty buses all day long and all of a sudden the people are going to change anyway. Uh, she, you are becoming extinct. The state, the T O D is going to take you out.
Any other comments from the public?
Need everybody in Green Street. Um, the little things I would like to suggest that you might want to consider. Uh, irrelevant irrelevant to the perhaps bigger issues that we're talking about. But something that is supported by the P O C date. So I will cite that as a um. Initiation, um, limit the, um, not maybe in P O C date. Limit the amount of impervious coverage on a site. Um, require wiring for ill, the electric vehicles. Um, based on the number of units that you have in the development. And also consider making a referral to some kind of a um expert. Um, to collect data. Um, that would um review an application for not only E V. But solar, um. Geothermal, other kinds of energy, uh composting. And reduction of solid waste and other recycling. Thank you. So send it out like you sent out your.
We have here some comments on the Zoom call. David, would you like to?
Yes, uh, and and just as a quick reminder for anyone in the meeting room. Uh, please uh offer your testimony in front of the webcam so that we can see, uh, so that we can see you. Um, to get to people on Zoom, I think Julie Sorsec had her hand raised first.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, Julie Sorcek, eight D Beach Street, Bethel, Connecticut. Um, I I appreciated all the comments that are being made tonight. Uh, Mr. Lennon raised a point in his and his comments about. Keeping, you know, all the work that's gone into the T O D and I do appreciate that. What I would ask is that any things going forward with looking at modifications to the T O D. That you definitely include stakeholders such as myself and my husband. We live within the T O D of Beach Street. Um, because it was extended out from a quarter of a mile radius to a half mile radius. So, um, please continue to keep stakeholders involved. So we have. Input into things as you go forward. If if you're bringing, when you bring, if and when you bring in. Any official people or, you know, experts to to talk to, talk to you about. Um, additional changes, which I think Mr. Olson was alluding to, like doing a different process to make the changes to the T O D. Um, that's, that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian.
Uh, next there was a Paula Antolini.
Yes, hello, uh, Paul Antolini, Jacob's Lane. Um, I just want to make a few quick comments on different things. Um, the gentleman stated, I I didn't get his name, about the traffic study. That it was done in twenty twenty. Is this correct?
I think that portion of the hearing is closed. Late to the party.
All right, I'll I'll go on to something else then. Um, you stated that uh twenty units per acre. Is that in this part or is that before?
No, that's not here.
Um, all right, hold on a second. All right, I have a question. I got some input from a source that. The applicant had moved some of the soil and did not need.
Whitney Avenue is closed, uh, as the chairman stated. So you got to move on. We're talking about T O D changes. So if you can start there.
All right, sorry. All right, I have one on that. Um, you are referring to uh. Twenty units per acre. Am I on the right one now?
No.
No? Oh, okay. I can't talk to about until then. Okay. Um, what about the height of the building? Okay, finally. All right. Um, I I think that reducing it to three stories. It's still a four-story building as shown with the one in the center of town. It's still a very large structure. You're calling it three stories, but it has sort of another floor's worth of height. And um. It seems to me that uh. Is it a twenty units per acre? Is that what you were changing it to?
It's not on the tape for discussion, Paula.
Oh, okay. So the height, the height to me is still rather large for a regular neighborhood of uh. You know, one family homes. And um, I think the issue is still if they have two acres, then you can um build twice as many. So it's still going to be a huge height for a regular height neighborhood. Such as some of the ones we spoke about, and I'm not going to mention any names. But that is an issue. It's the uh overwhelming uh. Fact that it doesn't fit the neighborhood. And um, we're talking about everything having to do with that amount of people in a, in a structure. All the other issues that it causes. And um, I don't believe anyone is keeping track of how many. Multi-unit buildings are in, let's say, a two-block area. Because when you talk about Greenwood Avenue, that's going to back up onto. All these other roads with more multi-unit structures. And I I really haven't seen anyone paying attention to that. And uh, that's going to be a very huge issue uh with these structures. The amount of structures being put in a small radius. Um, I'd also like to say that um. I hope you don't take this the wrong way, but um, the people deciding on these projects, meaning that the P and Z. Um, you should not have any businesses in the T O D area that are. Likely to make a lot more profit with a lot more people in the area. That's just a very important issue I'd like you to take into consideration. Um, anyone voting on this T O D issue. That is constantly going to say yes, just because it it profits them. I I just think they should refuse themselves. Now, I don't know what businesses any of you have, but I'm just making a general statement. That especially if you're in.
Really appropriate for this meeting.
Well, it's.
Produce some facts.
Prove what kind of.
Produce a fact that that any of us have. That's pretty accusatory, I think.
I just, no, no, no. I just said, I'm I'm just going.
I I see your backpedaling, but.
I'm throwing out an issue there that's very important in your voting process. And you should be very aware of, I I don't know where any of you live. I don't know if you have businesses, et cetera. But it's a very important factor that if someone's going to make. I'm sorry.
Charter, there's a process conflict of interest. This is not.
No, this is not appropriate period.
Paula, it's not appropriate for this meeting. Appreciate your concerns. If you have something relevant to the topic that we're discussing, please share it with us.
Well, obviously I'm on the wrong meeting. All right. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Any other hands raised, David?
I'm not seeing any other hands at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Dare I ask if there's any more comments in the room?
Excuse me, staff would like to respond.
I'm sorry.
Can staff respond? We're a little bit different. It's not an applicant. We are the commission. And staff.
Yes.
Um, in regards to some of the comments. Um, made to the plans themselves and the regulations and the association between the two. Um, I've been on four. P O C D plans and that also includes a couple of other studies that were done. In the history of me either being a participant on the land use commissions or as a member of the planning department. I've never heard of speak, um, Mr. Olson's comments in regards to changes to the regulation. Um, of this nature and going the extra mile that he perceives that we have to do. Uh, for example, um, I look at this change dealing with the double R ten and the residential zone. As tightening up the regulations pertaining to architecture and things of that nature. And height of buildings and maintaining your single-family and two-family homes. Similar to, uh, I just coming to mind. Uh, we made a major change many years ago dealing with what we call. Um, how, for example, how do we get condominiums in the downtown area? You know, you see plenty sites, you see a lot of different Julie Sor checklist in a condominium complex and things of that nature. That was based on a P O C D plan. After a couple of years, there was many, many different condominium applications in site plans that came before the planning and zoning commission. It was determined, we made a mistake. We need to make the change. We need to make the change now. And so therefore, the regulation wasn't even. Tweaked, the regulation was eliminated. Was that based on a study or recommendations from um professionals? Uh, it was based on the actual use of the regulations since they were adopted by the commission. I've seen that happen in many instances when we do make regulation changes. Based on the actual um usage of the regulation. The T R D plan is new. It's only been here since twenty sixteen. The regulations themselves have only been used in effect since twenty eighteen. To me, that's a very short period of time. But in that short period of time, I think that there is a misunderstanding by all parties and that's what prompted. The changes pertaining to this regulation in single-family and two-family zones. Is that there there, the by tweaking this regulation, it is. Accomplishing the consistency that you wanted to see within those zones pertaining to architecture. Pertaining to usage of sites. It's not limiting a single-family or a double-family zone. From wanting to do a tiny house in the back, convert a garage. To um, a little apartment, things of that nature. It doesn't affect the density per se. We are trying to protect the integrity and the architecture. Mr. Michaels talks about character. We don't, Bethel was beyond talking about character. We've learned not to talk about character. That's why we've been, we did the T O D for one reason. That's why we have the architectural regulations. We don't call it character anymore. We call it architecture and that's what we follow. So I consider this, I disagree as far as the regulations. That are proposed for the R ten, the double R ten and the R M O zone. Because it's enhancing and protecting the character or architecture of what you want to call our older neighborhoods. And our more prestigious downtown areas location of some of our older homes such as Grand Street and Blackman Avenue and things of that nature. Pertaining to the other. Items that have been brought up. Yes, there is a lot of discussion on the state level, pro and con for the T O D. Um, as it exists in the state of Connecticut. It is my opinion, and maybe this is something you as a commission want to explore. It is, it is staff's opinion that the town of Bethel is ten years ahead. Of any process dealing with T O D on the state level. We've gone through the exercise that the state of Connecticut as a whole is going through now with the. Um, one sixty, one sixty-nine strong and desegregate Connecticut. The issue, if there is any issue with the state of Connecticut, once again, it's the state of Connecticut sticking their nose. In a town's business under the zoning regulations. And what is happening is this is all getting bunched together with a change that we are proposing here tonight. I see that as a problem. I see that as a problem, but I do see that if there is more discussion that should be had pertaining to the planning process and the TOD, it can go on as we keep going forward like the master plan. Like I said before, and Peter, if you can correct me, please do, but I, I cannot recall of any instance when we have adopted a P O C D plan that we went back and revisited it in order to change our regulations. Do you recall?
So I don't recall any.
Okay.
Mostly because I like text amendments and map amendments to facilitate the developments that are. And I have no interest in asking you to do it, but usually, I can't think of any instance where this wasn't true. What we are asking for was basically consisting of. It's actually very common in other towns that you never do any map amendment or text amendment without amending the planning constitution at all.
Okay.
It's, it's very common.
Well, what I'm, oh, thank you.
So maybe if I could keep talking, we could add two points today with what you said.
You just go in front of the camera, Mr. Olson, please.
It's nine oh three.
I don't.
And you're up next.
You're welcome to continue this hearing because that's what.
Yes, we are.
It still violates uniformity. It's a problem. And, and there's ways around it. You could adopt two TOD districts, TOD one, TOD two. You could take the R one, R ten, R ten, or double R ten, or note out of the TOD. That might be the best solution for everybody. But you can't pick and choose this way. As for the, the plans and the experience, I, I think that because we had such an intense process to develop the plan, it's what sticks in my craw that we're just sort of throwing out pieces of it. And most of my comments relate to the density, which I know is going to be in May, but it still kind of relates to this as well. That honestly, what I'd really like you to do is call the people that helped to write the plan and say, what do you think? Even if it's just write a report on this change, and what do you think about this? Now, I have problems with the TOD plan in, in general. I think the form section doesn't work, that we end up only using two forms and one of the other ones, and finding a way to reincorporate that would be good. I think, as I've said to you many times, the triangle of density, parking, and grid space doesn't work, and we should find a way to make that all work together. But I think it needs to be a planning process. Let's collect all the data. Let's collect all the opinions. Let's do it the right way. So it's legal and binding. Last point I'll make, and this really is relating to the density.
Yes, Peter.
Sorry. I thought it was done. This is really, if you cut the density from thirty units to twenty inches an acre, you cut the affordable housing that the plan provides in by a third. And that's really problematic to me, because I think that the plan is an affordable housing provision mechanism that is valuable to you in how you respond to other applications that are asking you to approve or for what has it, is to be able to point to the plan and say, that requires that number of units per acre is usually going to get through. But thank you. Thank you, Peter.
I just have one question, Allison. Allison, take it from me. Just one question. I think the urgency sort of comes respectfully, knowing that there's some developments that are coming, the, you know, proposal of different things. That's where I think you don't want to be hasty and do something and make changes, because again, don't throw the baby out with bathwater. There's a lot of good stuff there. We also haven't been able to act upon a lot of that, a lot of those things because of the past three to four years of where we've been or in the world. But if we truly want to have TOD, and I think in the train and the bus is a big piece of that. We did find out yesterday, you can now take the bus from Bethel and go to downtown Ridgefield. You want to commute. But when you're thinking about this, well then, why haven't we addressed places and spaces around the train, right? Are there places and things that we need to have in place first? And so again, I know we don't want to talk about moratorium. We want to talk about making some small changes which could make things better. But I think there is a sense of urgency too, because you've got a lot of big things that might be coming along the pipeline that if they get presented under the current regulations, there's not that much space left that you're going to be developing TOD. And if things come in in the next two to three months, they're coming in under the regulations that we currently have. So I think that's where that sense of urgency kind of comes from. And not to negate, there's been some beautiful proposals that are out there that could benefit in other ways, but are we doing it right? And so that where we say, like to a toddler having a tantrum, we need to take a pause. I know we don't like to throw that around, but these are good small changes that could help in the short term locally with decisions that we can make here, but other bigger things that we don't have to throw out the big plan, and we could pause and say, yeah, we want to make sure we get this right. We want to make sure we get that street in the right place and get into the trains and those buses filled. So.
Thank you. In view of the hour, I'm going to ask if there's any, like one more comments before we move on. David, any hands raised? I don't see any.
I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom at this time, but I'll give a few more seconds in case anyone does raise their hand.
Paul, okay.
Alright, I'm gonna.
Continue here. What do you want to do with the hearing?
I'm going to continue this.
No.
Public hearing until April the eleventh?
No.
No? May?
May sometime.
May ninth meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Picture again.
Business meeting minutes. I should do a few minutes on February like eighth. Favor.
Hi.
And?
Hi.
Bob, Rich.
Hi. Bye.
Objection. Any abstain? Don't move. We have any invoices? It looks like one maybe.
And rushing to pay the invoices for the news time for four hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty cents second.
And?
Yeah.
Don't forget the votes on Zoom too, Mr. Chairman.
Nope, I'll get there.
Sorry. Hi.
Mr. Legnard?
Hi.
Thank you. Any objections? Any abstains? Don't move. Don't skip.
Go right to Berkshire.
Right to Berkshire.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Attorney Olson and representatives of Berkshire Industrial Park are here this evening to do a very brief presentation on what is called Global Spark One Drive. It was a site plan. It was previously approved. What's called reviews associated with there is the partners of town. The approval has lapsed, so they are in here to give you a brief presentation of the application. And my suggestion would be if you are so inclined after hearing it, you can come to a consensus. It does not need a public hearing. Public hearing for the special permit has been done.
Clarification unchanged.
That's clear. They will go through it with you.
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel, two seventy-five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Uses Convention Council. I'm here tonight at the app of Berkshire Industrial Corporation. And I hope we have an app that's too often like on until the last hour. So this application was originally brought to the commission and approved in two thousand and fourteen for a twenty thousand square foot building on this property. The site plan is here. Bethel Health Care Center is located that direction, which I think is east. And there's another building here to the west, and there's a very large pond behind that building. The approval was for a site plan, twenty thousand square foot building, but also for a special permit, because buildings over a thousand square feet require a special permit. That was granted by the commission and was recorded under the land. So the only thing we need right now is a site plan approval. We did receive an extension to start construction on this project in two thousand and fifteen, and unfortunately did not ask you for an extension to complete the project in two thousand and nineteen when it was due. But in the interim time period, we completed all the site work, put in all the storm water, did all the grading. The only thing that's left to do is build the building, nice parking lot, put in the landscaping. So we think we've got tenants to go into this space now, or at least we're talking to people, and so getting this reapproved, so we can first shovel them ground for these folks as soon as possible, as important. Essentially, all we're asking you to do is reapprove the existing plan and start the clock again. We had our engineer, Doug DeVesta, prepare two plans that are in your plan package. One shows you all the work that was completed, and one shows you what still has to be completed. Originally, when this was approved, it was designed for the twenty-five-year storm event, and sort of regulations have changed, and your engineering staff, it's now requiring different requirements for that. But we went and analyzed what was actually constructed, and it is capable of handling a one-hundred year storm event. So Doug DeVesta provided those calculations to the town engineer. We got an email back saying he was satisfied with that set of calculations. It was fortuitous that we had larger pipe available and installed it, so that really helped us a lot. So simply put, our request is to ask you to reapprove this, and let us move on.
There's no changes here to the actual construction of the building.
Correct. Correct. That's the building there. That's a newer.
Newer, newer. Building. Again, because of before pandemic, we really had, really.
This is Greg Steiner. I'm sorry, Greg Steiner.
Yeah. Chris Strucker. Was not a lot of interest for new buildings in that since the pandemic, we got more interest on.
What length of, what length of an extension on this are you looking for?
It's not an extension. It's a new approval. So it will be a five-year construction contract. Extendable at the end of that, if needed.
Okay.
It's a, it's a full site plan application, just as if it were French. It's just exactly the same.
Hey, Peter, what, what's the address? I'm sorry. It was, there was some background noise when, when we were introducing it. What, what's?
It's eleven Park Lawn Drive.
Okay.
The G I S map doesn't have that on there. It just says.
I, I know where it is. Okay, Park Lawn, got it.
Original application, we call this parcel Y one slash B combined.
Okay.
Eleven Park Lawn is better.
And we have, like, it's the thing, we have had quite a bit of interest. All our facilities are completely full, and we'd like to be able to have, had many tenants that would like to come in. And we've been partnering with Claire's, right, to be able to go out and market it and build another one.
I'd like to make a motion we approve.
Second.
Favor.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Then you get a time limit.
Bob, I hope you were going to say yes, because otherwise you're too late.
Next item. Twenty-two National Road LLC. Mass amendment R ten to D C, you're P D O, right?
What you want to say?
Set a public hearing. We have a motion to set a public hearing for May the twenty-third.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Against the tensions, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Next item.
Ken, just point of question. It says under all of these things, June first, twenty-three. What does that mean?
That is what that puts on for the amount of time. If you have. It's that's, you know, it's notation. Okay. It's a notation to herself. Okay. It, it's, it doesn't have any bearing on your guess.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
We have to hear by that date, or we have to, they have one.
Have to render a decision by that date, I believe, is the intent for that.
Okay, thanks. That's the sixty-five days.
Okay. J R, J A R Associates Site Plan Special Permit, one eighty-five Grassy Plain Street. Is that just sending a hearing date as well?
I have a question. Didn't we talk about this, Carson?
That, that's.
I believe this is an addition, right?
Next, the addition we talked about. This is another building on that side.
Yes. This is for. This is for that one.
As cast.
Set a public hearing for five twenty-three. Man, I hope it's the twenty-third. Is that the date?
I don't know.
Are, are you talking about the second meeting, the second meeting in May, Mr. Chairman? That is, that is, that is May twenty-third.
Thank you so much. Set the public hearing for May the twenty-third for J R, J A R Associates, one eighty-five Grassy Plain Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Objections? Abstentions? Don't move. We don't have that at the moment for the planners' report.
Want to take a?
Want to make a go together?
Yes, thank you, BJ.
No John, leave for alone, let her come in here. No.
You're up.
Planners report.
Okay, um. I have a request for an extension for twenty-eighth South Street. Twenty-eighth South Street is an application. It was approved and we're, Teresa Castelli, she's asking for an extension a one year. She's run into, you know, the testing regarding environmental issues. Lead paint from a lead, old lead paint house. And so she's in the process of getting that corrected. That'll be done shortly.
Remembering South Street.
Twenty-eighth South Street is near Rector Street, across the street.
Yeah.
Right outside the immediate vicinity of the TOD though.
That's so you're just asking for an extension?
Yes.
Of years?
Yes.
I move that we offer a recent extension three years near for twenty-eighth South Street.
Favor.
Um, next is.
I refuse myself. I'm not familiar with the application.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is. Outdoor dining, I noticed in the, the city of Danbury is issuing permits now for outdoor dining to the zoning permit format. In the town, what we did was at the start of COVID, we used the state statute pertaining to that. Otherwise, your outdoor dining permit is covered under the zoning regulations, and it's a special permit having to go before the planning and zoning commission. I don't, I wanted just to discuss with you and see if you wanted to make an amendment to the regulations dealing with so, with outdoor dining permits. Just make it something that is issued to the department, not have the restaurants and such have to go.
Do this whole process.
The whole special permit process that you originally had. And what we usually do with the outdoor dining permit, we have the building department check it great. Yeah, you know, just to make sure it's safe.
That's cool.
Yeah. Oh, they're always, yeah. In the park, you know, we, we work collaboratively together because we want our restaurants to continue to succeed.
Can I make a motion to make it easier for restaurants to have outdoor dining, whatever you just said?
That good.
Like, if we're going to streamline, I'm all for it, but we should have a, like a, if they're going to have any outdoor music or anything like that, and they should still have to come in.
Oh, yeah, they always do.
Okay.
Entertainment, entertainment's different.
Yeah. You know, I don't think if, if the notes starts having a band in the front yard, people might be upset.
Yes. Just so you know, I'm looking for my memo in relation to the next topic. On my phone.
Some, I, I, I support the, the idea.
You support the idea?
Are you taking a vote on that tonight? If I, if I can just.
I'll put something together.
Okay, if I can just add something to that, Nosh does have music. Yes, they do. Outside. I don't know if it's live or canned. No, it's live. But, you know, or, or right, or whatever. That was a big part of our discussion, when we approved it. Right. The other thing that I would add is, are these temporary outdoor? Or are they?
Yes.
Calendar-based?
Usually it's calendar-based.
It's yearly, yeah. Okay.
It usually runs, I think it's from April first, October first. And then depending on the weather, we just, they don't really, you know, we, we're not police.
Yeah.
We only go out when there's a problem. So if somebody's out there in December or something and they can't flower or whatever, you know, then they're, they will do something. I apologize. I'm looking on my.
So I'm noting this at that will rate up. Motion for the next meeting. We, we can't do it this month?
To what?
Do you have to draft tech? Do you have to draft text for that, Beth?
Yes, okay.
Oh, okay.
Have a consensus is the.
Yeah, right.
To do it.
We should draft in a, a text amendment to simplify the process, but with that, to Paul's point. We can, we can differentiate between outdoor dining and outdoor entertainment.
And, yeah, right.
Make it work.
When we, when we didn't know it was, it was all long discussion.
I'm, okay, um. The next item on the agenda, uh, the other thing I have to talk to you about is, um, seventy-seven South Street. Is the old Boggy Building?
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay. It's common. It's common.
Ay, ay, ay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be okay.
Your mouth.
It is. Hold on, I'm trying to, David, I'm sorry, just know, I'm trying to bring it up on my phone. I didn't get a chance to put it in the drive, okay? And I don't have any pictures. All right, so.
Do they find anybody?
Alyssa, um, Val Petty and, um, the applicant, the client has been working on, um. Final renderings associated with this building. In doing so, and I've been involved to, to a degree too. In doing so, one thing that stood out with the coloring on the side that is adjacent to the railroad track. Was that it's near the railroad track. What's associated with railroad tracks, grit, dust, things of that nature. So going back and forth, um, if you look at this, you will see. The final, um, thought. And we're going to do this. The applicant has agreed to do this. He's going to do a brick. Side, a brick, he's going to do brick on the side adjacent to the railroad tracks. If you look at that. Hmm?
Actual brick?
Actual brick.
Wow.
Not a wall with sod. Now, no, you know where I'm going with that one, but now with, no, with, with breakfast sauce. Yeah, oh. Just not going to there.
No, okay.
Do you two determine?
If anybody wants to see it, you can come up and look at my phone.
I will. I think it's terrific. I think it's perfect. I like.
It really looks good.
As, as long as it's not like pretend.
No, not pretend.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, so that's, that was the most important thing to get squared away tonight.
Great.
That's a major change, um, Alyssa, and we wanted you to agree. We're going to keep going forward with this. Um, also, the, um.
What's the use?
Those are apartments. Also, I, I did have, I can't show it to you. What I will do is I will email it all to you. Um, he's in the final phases. It's done, basically, the house next door. But when you see the facade, the trim and all the things that will be that he's doing on it for the final. It's, it's very, it looks beautiful. Okay, so anyways, this is, um. That's how I wanted to end this meeting. I apologize. It's been a lot. For all of you, because you work very hard.
So any other, um, public members before we adjourn for tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn.